Yep. Good evening. My name's Paula Reap, Mayor of Kingborough, and it is my pleasure to welcome you all to tonight's council meeting on Monday the 3rd of June 2024, and a warm welcome to those who are in the public gallery. Excuse me. Time being 5:30pm, and I now officially declare this meeting open. I wish to advise that council meetings are recorded and made publicly available on our website, and are also live streamed on YouTube, and in accordance with council's policy, I'll ask the CEO to confirm that the audio recording has started.
It has.
Thank you. I wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, pay respects to elders past and present, and acknowledge today's Tasmanian Aboriginal community. Our attendees this evening are myself, councillor Reap, the deputy mayor, councillor Gladwrit, councillor Antoli, councillor Bain, councillor Cordova, councillor De... councillor Midgley, councillor Richardson, and councillor Street. From our staff this evening, we have the CEO, Mr Stewart, the Chief Information Officer, Mr Malt, Director of People and Finance, Mr Spinks, Director of Governance, Recreation and Property Services, Mr Sme, Director of Engineering Services, Mr Reeve, Director of Environment Development and Community Services, Ms Shakuti, Manager of Finance, Mr Jones, Media and Communications Advisor, Ms Adams, and Executive Assistant, Mrs Morton. We have no apologies this evening. Confirmation of minutes? I'm looking for a mover and a second, please. I've got a mover in councillor Fox and a second in councillor Gladwrit. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. On page two, workshops held since the last council meeting. We had a workshop on the 27th of May in relation to the Jack Jumper's High Performance Centre and also the budget. Still on page two, declarations of interest. Does any councillor have a declaration of interest? I have one to declare, and that is that there is a line item in the budget in relation to the Ten Lives Cats Centre, and as of about five weeks ago, I'm president of the Ten Lives Cats Centre. Transfer of agenda items. Is there any item on the agenda that a councillor would like to transfer from open into closed session or closed into open session? Thank you. Questions without notice from the public? Does any member of the public wish to ask a question? If so, could you come to the lectern, please? And you know the drill, just your name and suburb, please, ahead of your question. Thank you.
Good evening. Charles Biggins, Lestevile. I've just got some questions regarding Kingborough Council's requests for consent to remove or modify trees and native vegetation. A number of months ago, I asked questions regarding the approval process during or following a storm event where we might have emergency works to attend to, and whether or not council was still requiring landholders to follow and proceed with council approval process in that situation. We had, and I specifically asked about hung up trees, because they weren't fallen on the ground, they were still attached to the ground, still, yep, maybe partly uprooted, but hung up into other trees. What would council's position be? And I was reassured that council would... A reasonable and practical approach to those kind of situations. On Friday, we had another intense gale force through Kingborough. Lectern's filing, but anyway.
No, it's not the individual ones.
I'm sure you can, I'm sure you can hear me.
It's not the individual one, it's happening to mine as well, sorry. Apologies for our...
That's fine, I'm sure you can hear me anyway. On Friday, we had a gale force event through Kingborough, and which impacted a number of trees, and I was contacted and looked at a tree in Firthside which had catastrophically failed and was lodged into another tree. I was surprised that the landowner is telling me that council was still requiring, still requiring him to go through the council approval process. This tree is this big, it is broken off halfway up, there is tonnes of weight hanging precariously, and it's threatening not only, more, it's more so threatening his neighbour's property because it's on a boundary fence. Has something changed in council's procedures since I asked that question? And the events on Friday?
Ms Shakuti. Through you, mayor. I am aware of that particular situation. Mr Biggins came to my attention today, so we are looking into it as a priority, and we'll have some advice back to the landowner as soon as possible. To my knowledge, no, our process has not changed. If there is branches or a tree that has fallen off or fallen over, of course, it can be removed. Any remaining trees that are still intact and in the ground, I believe, would need a process, need to go through the process. However, I will talk to the officers from our NAB team and have some advice as to the landowner as a priority this week.
Your council officer looked at the tree this morning, and still, anyway. It's a matter of urgency. I did say that there is tonnes of weight of tree hung up in another tree over a fence line. If it becomes dislodged, it can impact the neighbouring house. I don't have to tell you what happens when that happens. This is an emergency, and I did ask what would council's procedure be, and I was reassured that we wouldn't have to go through all this red tape in an emergency. There is a 100-ton crane arriving there in the morning to remove this hazard. Okay, I have some other questions regarding the application form for removal of trees. Apparently, by submitting this form, council will determine whether you require a council permit or consent for the removal or pruning of vegetation on land you own or manage. Is council claiming to be gatekeeper for all heads of authority for all acts of parliament that deal with vegetation management on private land?
Ms Shakuti.
Through you, mayor. No, that is not the case. We apply the, our bylaw and our offset policy in accordance with the legislation in which we are able to have those bylaws and policies in place, and they work, I suppose, in conjunction with other legislation such as the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act and the Native Vegetation Act as well.
There are other acts, state government acts, that have authority over vegetation management. Council alludes to those other acts in this same form. Section three, we tick a box, boundary fencing, bushfire risk, personal safety, primary production, future development. Yet, some of these council has authority under. Under what authority is council acting as an agent for the state, other than through the Local Government Act and the Land Use and Planning Approvals Act? What authority has council been given to administer the Boundary Fences Act 1908, the Fire Service Act 1979, and the Neighbourhood Disputes About Plants Act 2017?
Ms Shakuti.
Through you, mayor. We're not administering those acts. They are relevant legislation in when we are applying our decision-making process under the bylaws and our policies.
I've put it to you that the form is misleading. You've listed these other items that allude to other acts, and you state at the beginning of the form that council will determine whether you require a council permit or consent. People are under the impression, and take it on good faith, that council is somehow the one-stop-shop for tree removals, or at least tree removal permissions.
Do you have another question, Mr Biggins?
Yes, I do. The application form then goes on to state, do not use this form in vegetation removal if vegetation removal is associated with a development application. By stating that is council's, by stating this, is council leading the landholder down a path that will that will see any request for tree removals dealt with through council's extensive discretionary powers that have been incorporated into the Kingborough interim planning scheme, citing high conservation status, and not through the general provisions of the Local Government Act, where the CEO is duty-bound to abate a nuisance, including a tree hazard?
Ms Shakuti.
Through you, mayor. The permit to remove a tree and a development application are two types of pathways, different pathways for removing vegetation. Not all vegetation triggers a development application. When it does, that is the process for assessing whether it requires, one, a development application, but, two, what the conditions are associated with that removal if it's approved. The permit is for vegetation, native vegetation removal that falls outside development applications.
Why specifically are people being directed not to fill out this form if they are developing their property?
Ms Shakuti.
Only in the circumstance where a development application would be required for that particular vegetation removal are they directed to do so.
But they still, they still have rights, or they still, yeah, they still have property rights under other legislation, and yet they're being directed. Yeah, obviously, there's no answer to that. In section three, reasons for vegetation removal, boundary fencing is an option. This is covered by the Boundary Fences Act 1908. This is not an act that council has any authority in, yet it is listed as an option. Do council officers advise landholders of the provisions for tree removal contained within section 16 of the Boundary Fences Act 1908, and that no council permit is required if a landholder chooses to take advantage of the provisions contained within that act?
Ms Shakuti.
Through you, mayor. We are not administering the act. That is a reason why you might need to have vegetation removed, or why it might be exempt.
It's one of the boxes that you tick, boundary fencing, as a reason. If you tick that box, is the landowner advised by council staff that this is administered or is authorised under the Boundary Fences Act?
Ms Shakuti.
Through you, mayor. I believe that is the case, but I'll have to take it on notice.
I would appreciate that. The tree that we're bringing in a 100-ton crane tomorrow to remove is within one metre of the boundary. How does a Part Five Conservation Covenant alter council's responsibilities to provide for the health and wellbeing of the community? If a tree is assessed as a hazard to persons or property, what difference to the approvals process does a Part Five Conservation status make to the approvals process?
Ms Shakuti.
Through you, mayor. I'm not actually quite sure what...
Apparently, this tree in question, the one we're attending to tomorrow, the property has, the development apparently had a conservation, a Part Five covenant across it, so I'm assuming it was a conservation covenant, and this is somehow holding up the approvals process. Surely, the responsibility of council to abate a hazard has precedence over this?
Ms Shakuti.
Through you, mayor. I imagine if there is a real hazard, it would not matter whether it's on land that is under a Part Five Conservation Agreement. What if the tree is not an immediate risk? Then it would have to be assessed as per our normal processes.
Is there another question, Mr Biggins?
Yeah, I'm assuming I'm the only qualified arborist in the room to make a judgement about whether the tree is safe or not. Council explicitly asks that arborists present their subject expert assessments of the likelihood of failure and the risk of harm to persons and property in the format of one of the industry-recognised privately-owned and licensed risk matrix such as QTRA, Valid or Trax. All these programmes are designed for landholders to assess their own tree risk and prioritise works accordingly. They are based on the assessor establishing an acceptable level of risk threshold with the landholder before they start the assessment process. It is commonly used by governments, utilities, schools and councils to assess their own trees. It is not fit-for-purpose risk matrix to impose on a third-party landholder.
I think that was the question in there. Ms Shakuti.
Why are we, okay, then, the question is, why are you, council, insisting on using a risk matrix for, you're relying on arborists to present expert, subject expert advice, and then you're asking them to put it through one of these risk matrix, which is an in-house risk matrix for landholders to assess and prioritise their own trees and their own, and set their own levels. You, Kingborough Council will have a different risk level to state growth, who will have a different risk level, acceptable risk level than one of the schools. This is, this is what it's designed to do. This is not fit-for-purpose to be used, to be imposing the baseline risk level without having that discussion with the landholders. They can simply say, I have a zero tolerance of risk, and you, and the whole risk matrix is thrown out the window. Why is it included in, for landholders, for arborists to use to assess a landowner's tree hazard?
Ms Shakuti.
Through you, mayor. I don't personally have specialised expertise in tree management. I will have to take that on notice and consult my team members who do.
Thank you very much for your time. I'm sure you've got a lot on tonight. Okay. Cheers.
Thank you, Mr Biggins. Are there any other questions? Thank you. If you could come to the lectern, turn it on by pressing the talk button and just provide your name and the suburb in which you live, please. So you need to just, sorry. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Philip Haynes, and I live in the area of Rosslyn Avenue, James Avenue, Mount Royal. The previous person who got up and spoke, talked about a tree hazard, could I just mention, so it goes on record, opposite James Avenue on the bank above the cutout of the road as it curves around the Rosslyn Avenue, I've had four people comment about this single gum tree which is hazardous. I don't want to say any more, but it is a concern, even to a person like Peter Hodgman who lives opposite.
I think we are, council is aware of that tree, because it previously had been put forward for heritage listing, and council voted against it being included on the heritage register.
Okay, that's, I just want to sort of bring it up, maybe note it again. Also, I'm the person who lives at the bottom end of James Avenue, where James Avenue joins the Mount Royal Road. At the moment, there is an intolerable, disgusting piece of graffiti on the wall. It is very obvious to everybody. I have asked the council three times. It's been there about five, six weeks now, and they promised it will be removed. Could something be done with that piece of graffiti? I know graffiti is a bit of a problem in Kingston at the moment. I get this information from shiploads. They don't sell the paint openly to the public, because they, you know, these people get the paint, the spray paints. Obviously, they're not little kids, because to reach some of the height that they do this spraying on, you've got to be fairly tall, or they use a ladder.
Yep.
Could that, please, a bit of graffiti be removed? It's offensive, of course, of looks, because there's also a sniggling point behind it.
Yep, thank you. Certainly, look, we've, I've had many conversations with our local police inspector about the graffiti issues that seem to be rampant in Kingborough at the moment, as well as other parts of southern Tasmania, and we are in the process of developing both a policy in relation to...
And we are in the process of developing both a policy in relation to how we deal with graffiti, but also trying to look at some of the broader issues of how we can engage young people in Kingborough so that this sort of stuff doesn't happen. And I know that it's distressing when it does and so certainly I've taken a note of the location of that and we will pass that on to our maintenance crew and see when it can be removed.
Thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? No. We'll now continue on, questions on notice from the public. There was one question on notice from Ms McKeon with a response from Mr Smee in relation to the bus interchange. Takes us to page two, questions without notice from councillors. Do any councillors have questions without notice? Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, Mayor. My first question is about Kingston Park development contracts. With the benefit of hindsight, is it fair to say that the contracts signed with our development partners at Kingston Park should have contained more robust parameters to safeguard council's cash flow position in the event of a failure by development partners to deliver the project on time? Should the contracts have contained stronger contractual obligations for certain deliverables within certain timeframes? And options for financial restitution to council for failing to meet those deadlines?
Thank you for the question, Mr Smee. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, I think the existing contract contains clauses that were drawn up with the best legal advice and with the best advice that we could receive in relation to land disposal. And obviously with the benefit of hindsight, there has been unforeseen circumstances that have meant that the developments haven't been delivered within the timeframes expected. However, to suggest that the, the contract should have contained penalties, if you like, for, for not developing within those timeframes would have completely changed the dynamic with, in which the agreement was drawn up. And we may not have got a developer to sign up under those conditions. So I think, you know, everything is within the project delivery agreement that you would expect in terms of milestones and what happens if you don't achieve those milestones. And we're now in a situation where we're at that point that milestones haven't been delivered. And council now has the option of walking away from the agreement and going down a different path. But I, I don't think there is anything with the benefit of hindsight that we could or should have changed. And as I say, had we sought to make, to, to put in place an agreement that had, was more strongly weighted in favour of, of council and the deliverables, we may not have got a developer to sign up at all.
Councillor Cordova.
Thank you. My second question is about forensic review and recommendations on council's financial position. In business, in sport, in any profession, when something doesn't go according to the plan, even if it's due to circumstances outside of one's control, it's important to have a review and to evaluate what happened, to identify what went wrong and when, and to think of ways to ensure that it doesn't happen again, including implementing any risk treatments that might prevent it from happening in future. So in the context of council's finances, in addition to developing a long-term financial plan, will council conduct a forensic review into what went wrong? With council's finances, with a chronology of events and include any recommendations on ways to avoid this situation happening again? And for the sake of transparency and accountability, will the council publish the results of that review when it's complete on the council's website?
Before I ask the CEO to deal with that, I will just preface his remarks by saying that as, as a council, like the other twenty-eight councils around Tasmania, we have quite stringent auditing processes, as you would be aware, where we have an independent audit panel. And as well, we get audited by the auditor general every year. So there is a thorough reconciliation of our accounts as well as external review of them. And I have every confidence that our staff have been able to meet the criteria that have been set by both the audit panel and also by the auditor general. But I'm not sure whether Mr Stewart would like to add anything to that.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you. There's no plan at this stage to undertake a forensic analysis of the financial position or the, the history that's brought us to this point. As the mayor has mentioned, we do have external audit and the, the office of the auditor general that, that undertake reviews of our finances. And then we have an audit panel that receives that information and provides us with organisational advice. I'm confident we have the, the mechanisms in place to understand how we're performing financially and receive recommendations from industry professionals back into the organisation. What I would say is through the development, excuse me, of the long-term financial management plan, I would expect us to understand the context that this organisation is currently in and, and seek to improve the financial position of this organisation for, for, through this next financial year and into the future as well.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the CEO for that answer. Further to that, will that, will the, the audit function, including the external auditors, provide public recommendations, recommendations on how to implement risk treatments, particularly around events that are outside of council's control, whether that's interest rates or construction costs going up or another black swan event like Covid, will there be recommendations that acknowledge, even if there were circumstances outside of council's control, will there be recommendations that say, well, here's how you can mitigate the risk to stop this from happening again?
Mr Stewart.
Through you, Mayor. I don't expect that we will have specific recommendations on those type of risks that we hold as an organisation. However, as an organisation, we will be considering the, the unknowns. And I think, you know, when we reflect on the, the events of the last, you know, five years with, with Covid, they are events that many people have not been, you know, were unable to predict. However, looking into the future, I see a, a future where there is more uncertainty and that as an organisation, we need to be preparing ourselves to be in a financially resilient position. So looking at good practice from around the, around the globe, around the, the operation of, of local government is something that we should be doing as, as stewards of this organisation.
Thank you.
Further questions without notice, councillor Midgley.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. Firstly, I'd like to just acknowledge, I didn't attend the event, but the Blackmans Bay Community Association recently had an event at the Blackmans Bay Skate Park that was funded through a grant and congratulations to them. They sent all our councillors a great summary of that. And with that summary came a long list of recommendations that they would like to see happen in that space, which came from the community. And these are, these range from low hanging fruit type projects to more kind of bigger budget items. And I guess I'm wondering, and this has happened before with different community groups. Again, it's such a great thing that we have that community really close to the people, but I guess what's the process? Like what happens there in regards to this? Here we are now deciding on a budget tonight. We know what's sort of happening the next twelve months. Like what, yeah, I guess I'm wanting to know what the process is in regards to that and how you respond back to our community in regards to such requests.
So yes, I agree. It was certainly a wonderful event. I was able to, to be there and the community was very engaged. And it's a great event that the Blackmans Bay Community Association held and because it was such a lovely sunny day, a bit foggy at first, it was on that foggy Saturday, but when that cleared, it was a beautiful sunny day and they were surprised by the number of people who came out. And I thought what was very valuable about it was that they had butcher's paper there, asking members of the community what they'd like to see at the skate park and other things that they would like to see in the area. And they have now forwarded those on to, to all of us as councillors to review. My next step would be that when I have one of my regular meetings with the community association, that we go through them in terms of what they believe their priorities are. And then I guess that's a discussion that all of us need to collectively have as we work towards the, the next, the following budget. It may be, and I certainly from looking at the list already, some of them are probably able to be done because they're very low cost. We'll probably be able to do those out of a budget cycle because they're not like big capital costs. Others, we would have to look at putting them into a capital programme at an appropriate time. But very valuable information to have from the community.
Thank you. Further question in regards to the Kingborough Sports Precinct. If you go there on a Saturday morning, it's a fantastic hive of activity of young people participating and children in sport and recreation. And with that comes a few different issues, one being like parking really. And I guess just the first question on that is, are council staff aware of that matter there? And the other one is in regards to Kingborough Sports Precinct on Gormley Drive. In the evenings, when children are leaving the grounds in the dark, it's quite unsafe with kids crossing roads. There's just a few matters there. So again, they're like, you know, those budget kind of items that we'll look into. But I guess, yeah, how's the process in regards to that and are staff aware of those matters?
So as you'll be aware, we did do a master plan several years ago in relation to the Kingborough Sports Centre precinct. And there was, up near where the overflow parking currently is, there is the capacity to extend that car park if it's required in the future. Obviously that would require a capital programme for a, a capital project for that to take place. But certainly we've got that flat piece of, of land there that could certainly be turned into additional parking. Because I know from having been a soccer mother, that the area can get quite congested when there's multiple activities on at the sports centre, at the gymnastics centre, netball, et cetera, et cetera. So that's something that we once again would need to consider in the future. In relation to the lighting on Gormley Drive, I'm going to flick that to Mr Reeve, please.
Through you, Mayor. Yeah, so Gormley Drive's a little bit similar in terms that the master plan actually also incorporated that area as well at the same time. So at some stage there that, that was looking at a, as a secondary exit. It's obviously tied up with a number of other potential things in that, that area with the, the laths and, and soccer as well at the same time. So at the moment, it's, it's a, it's a lower use unsealed road there which gets higher use when people are actually using the, the Gormley Road. Gormley Road Soccer Ground, I'm not aware how much lighting's actually down through there. But it would be something where, yes, it's probably, probably could do with actually some probably improvements in that area there, which would be future improvements.
Any further questions? Councillor Bain.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I just flag that I'd like to ask a question without notice in closed session, please?
Yes, certainly. Thank you. Further questions? If not, we will move on. We're now at questions on notice from councillors. The first one is in relation to rates notices from councillor Midgley with a response from Mr Jones. And the next one is in relation to parking enforcement from councillor Cordova with a response from Mr Basham. Takes us to page four, petitions still being actioned. There are no petitions still being actioned. And at the time the agenda was compiled, there were no petitions that had been received. We're now on page five of the first of the officers' reports to council, operation on capital budgets and rates resolution twenty-four, twenty-five with recommendation on page twelve. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder. I've got a mover in councillor Gladewright and a seconder in councillor Fox. Councillor Gladewright.
Thank you. Rates provide incredible value to the community when you consider the amount of roads that are tended to, the beautiful parks we have to enjoy, the amazing trails and facilities our community gets to enjoy and the delivery of services, the management of facilities and infrastructure and actioning the various strategic plans and programmes that council offer. This year, our staff are recommending a twelve percent rate increase. This recommendation equates to two hundred and thirty-two dollars per year for an average sized property. I appreciate that naturally as councillors, we want to lessen the burden on our community and I understand why councillors have made attempts to explore ways we can get the twelve percent down some. I thank you for your kindness and I really appreciate your intent. However, from my perspective, when I stop and consider that this community does expect a lot from their council, it makes more sense to me to ask for a greater contribution now so that we don't have to tell them that we are unable to fund their requests in the future. Councillor Antoli, as you know, there are dozens of improvements on Bruny Island which have been identified by residents, but our budget doesn't allow them. Councillor Fox, you've been a great advocate for our tracks and trails programme. What was the total amount of identified projects which remain unfunded? Councillor Cordova, as you know, we have the community screaming out that they want a pool, but entertaining that idea, given our current situation, is highly irresponsible. Councillor Dean, you got a petition going for the Taruna Bowls Club car park improvements, but we can't afford it. Councillor Bain, you and I sat in that snug community meeting and watched that video of the kids pleading with us for safer routes to school. And we have to look them in the eye and say we can't afford it all right now. Councillor Midgley, you know too well the number of cycling projects which we can't afford. Councillor Richardson, your advocacy around Krieger's Road is an example of dozens of requests we get for gravel road maintenance. Councillor Street, we have a vital link road at Spring Farm which we can't afford. Councillor Reet, how many accessible projects remain, accessibility projects remain unfunded? When I look at my emails from this last year, other requests include potholes need fixing, footpaths improved, change rooms at the boat shed end of Kingston Beach, verges mowed more often, drains cleared more often, the ceiling of more roads, graffiti removed more rapidly. There was a whole swag of improvements at the Blackmans Bay Skate Park which were suggested. More street lighting, more pedestrian crossings. We have local area traffic management plans which need funding. Several millions of identified improvements which we can't afford. We have the Kingston Beach flood study with flood mitigation measures which we can't afford. This is where I believe the community would rather us respond more meaningfully rather than just lowering a recommended rate rise as a way to be responsive. Actually, as councillors, we are asked to do two things. Firstly, we are representatives of our community, which I think we all do very, very well. But secondly, we must also consider the recommendations that are provided to us by the council staff and ensure that operationally we are fiscally responsible. I believe that in the previous term before me and during my time on council, these two considerations have become unbalanced when it comes to rate increases. The council has always not listened to the expert advice from our qualified staff and voted for rate rises that are lower than the recommendation and are inadequate of our needs. Today, as a result, we find ourselves in a very difficult situation. Because we didn't listen, we are facing an operating loss of two point three seven nine million dollars. Because we didn't listen, we are now facing an environment where the cost of everything we do has risen beyond our means. Because we didn't listen, it means we have been funding new capital works projects out of what really should have been renewal funds. Because we didn't listen, we were not in a position to cope with the increase in depreciation after our assets were revalued. Because we didn't listen, we are now unable to cope with the fact that we have to pay interest on loans which were supposed to be paid out by now. Because we didn't listen, we are now not set up with a buffer or an ability to recover from a catastrophic event. Because we didn't listen, our staff are demonstrably under-resourced and facing immense pressure. We are, we are living beyond our years and it's about time we sat up and listened to our expert staff for a change. This year, our expert staff have recommended a twelve percent rate increase in order to improve our financial situation, especially when our auditors are telling us we need to improve our cash position. Good governance is not just keeping rate rises low. Good governance is ensuring the viability of this organisation so that we can continue to keep up with expectations our community have of us. Good governance is not voting for something just to be elected again. Good governance is listening. One more minute, please.
I've got a mover in, that the deputy mayor be granted, sorry, that the deputy mayor be granted an additional, say two minutes in case you need it. Moved by councillor Cordova, seconded by councillor Midgley. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Motion is carried. You have two more minutes.
Thank you. Good governance is listening to our qualified expert staff. I would like to acknowledge those who have made a submission to the draft budget. We are making measures to improve the way rates are able to be paid and our hardship policy is also being improved. I also acknowledge the hard work of Mr Spinks and his team to produce this report and the work involved in getting us the elected representatives to understand all of the and the work involved in getting us the elected representatives to understand all of the information. This year, I am voting in line with the staff's recommendation because for me it is important to rectify the historical imbalances between our two duties and to ensure that we are fiscally responsible on behalf of the Kingborough community.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Fox.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to thank firstly the staff and councillors for the months of hard work that we've gone through to get to this position and for the preparation of this report before us tonight. Kingborough has survived a pandemic of COVID over the last five years. During this period, we've been deliberately undercharging the rates. Now we need to catch up. Our expenses exceed our income and this cannot continue sustainably. Council's long-term financial plan must move council to an underlying operating surplus. Inflation arising from COVID has reduced the real value of our money. Additionally, the council cost index is higher than the consumer price index and has been for a long time. Existing services and assets appeared to cost more, including wages for staff, maintenance, existing asset renewal, which appears as annual depreciation, and interest rates on debt. COVID was unexpected. More unexpected events will occur, including bushfires, floods and economic disruption. The old long-term plan failed to address COVID and the consequent inflation. The deficit effect has accumulated. The new long-term plan that we are thinking about now must address the current reality and the future unknowns as well. The long-term plan should increase the rates to cover the costs of an operating deficit of $2.4 million for 2024, the highest it's ever been, I understand. Expected future deficits of a similar magnitude, accumulated deficits from previous years and unexpected events. A 12% increase this year will commence a long-term plan to move towards financial sustainability. Decades of work by Kingborough Council has created a place where everybody wants to live, including our general manager who's come all the way from New Zealand. An annual deficit prevents the council from providing the essential services which the community expects. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fox. Further speakers, councillor Midgley.
Thank you, Mayor. I also speak in support of this budget. And like many councillors, I'm sure, it's one of the many matters that I guess we lose sleep over. And I was thinking about this on my way to council tonight. And one of those reasons is because we fundamentally care. We care about the community and as we know, council is the closest to the community. They are at the heart of our decision-making. Every budget that we have passed since I've been on council, whether that been two, four, eight, all that, we always talk about the cost of that increase on rate rise to the community. It's always at the heart of our decision-making. And that's why it really does weigh on us and why we really spend time in workshops and more so ever this year trying to find cost savings. But also in that, listening to our experienced staff and us and with those cost savings coming back to us again with some different rates and things like that. And that has happened in the future, but it hasn't, we haven't had a change from what initially went out to our budget to the community. And I'll be outlining a bit of that now. And that is because really we need to act now. So I have also written quite a lot of notes. So budgets are a balance for all of us and even more so for council, who's also at the demand of cost of living pressures, costs going up in all areas of our projects and works. We see that in our tenders. We see the costs more than what that original tender estimate was because of the crunch that we're all feeling. As councillor Glade Wright said, councillor is the closest to the people and we have the demand and long list of community wishes and balancing a budget. The last few council meetings, we have passed action plans and strategies. We have high community expectations and a long wish list for that. As councillor Glade Wright went around, we also have some pet projects that we would like to see as well. People know I will keep sticking cycling on the agenda and on the forefront of our mind because that's a big wish list of a community that I represent and support. We live in a great community, we're a thriving community. People have high expectations and council is the forefront of that. We know, and if it's your first time sitting around council, we are more than roads, rates and rubbish. And people expect more. Some of the councillors in the room might be surprised that myself, as a councillor who works in the community and social services area for the last 30 years, who a week doesn't go by where I support a family with cost of living measures, is supporting this rate rise tonight. But like I've said before, I've listened, I have heard the experienced staff, I've read the report and we need to find that balance. The last six years, since I've been on council, the population is progressing. We've had some really exciting projects and upgrades and much of these have been in response to community desires, as well as taking advantage of interest-free loans to do Kingston Park and transform Kingston projects. I'm sure so many of the community agree it's been so worthwhile for the wellbeing of our community and especially our children. And there's more and more research that suggests investing in our early years and the cost savings later on. We kind of don't think about those measures when we put such a fantastic project like Kingston Park. But the associated cost measures for the health and wellbeing for our children has benefits for years to come. The Kingston Park is an all-round asset and that connection for caregivers as well that we just can't underestimate. We wanted Kingston Park to be the best playground in Tasmania and we have that and more. People talk about it everywhere. People come international, interstate and they talk about this amazing asset. And yes, we have had a bit of a fallout in regards to some of those borrowings. But we have measures in place in this report tonight to mitigate those. In council's last financial report, in the risk section, it stated councillors operating at minimum cash levels and that long-term financial plan will need to address. In the report before us tonight, for those listening in the community, I've highlighted points that I feel like are important. And I am going to read those and I'm going to go through those. The first one being 4.4, underlying operating deficits. And I'd also like to thank the council staff for putting this report together and making it really easy to read and understand and concise as well. So underlying operating deficits. Council has been recording underlying operating deficits on a regular basis for an extended period of time. This is not a sustainable financial practice. Council has recognised this and previous versions of council's long-term financial plan have sought to move council to underlying operating surpluses. However, this has not been achieved. Council is currently forecasting an underlying operating deficit for the current financial year of $2.379 million. It entered the year budgeting for a small underlying surplus. So I might need three minutes, maybe four.
So moved by councillor Cordova and seconded by councillor Fox that councillor Midgley be given another three minutes. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried.
Thank you. It is important that council moves to recording modest underlying operating surpluses to provide a buffer against unexpected costs, unexpected events, e.g. costs arising from storm events to provide funds for asset renewal. So I'm trying to read fast. Depreciation, one of the major reasons for council forecasting an underlying deficit in the current year and budgeting for another 2425 is an increase in depreciation costs. 4.9, cash position. Again, as reported in the monthly financial reports, council's cash position is at low levels. This follows a large capital works programme, including Kingston Park and the CBD, but I've highlighted those benefits. It is important that cash position is restored to more sustainable levels. 6.8, council has historically sought to keep rate increases as low as possible. Over the last five years, rate increases have been less than consumer price index. The CPI, given its purpose as an indicator of consumer price increases, is not a measure of the cost increase facing the local government sector. Nonetheless, it is a comparison often used by the public. 6.10, council traditionally compares itself to take pride from the fact that its average rates have been the lowest of Tasmanians metropolitan councils. Comparison data compiled for the Future of Local Government Review showed that for the 2021/22 year Kingborough average rates property of one percent, second lowest of the seven metropolitan councils and data for 2022 is not available. So as councillor Glade Wright said, we have been missing the mark and it's why we're in this predicament. There we are now. 6.16, the aim is to place council in a sustainable financial position to enable it to sustainably deliver on council and community objectives. The updated financial plan will be finalised by council and adopted in due course. The proposed rate increase of 12% for 2425 begins a process of improving council's financial position and resilience. However, it does not fully complete the task. The 2425 budget, despite the increased forecasts, a substantial underlying deficit of $2.112 million and council will still be in a low cash position. In this context, it's worth noting that a 1% rate increase results in additional revenue of approximately $0.36 million. One more point I had. 11.2, council faces more, some financial challenges and the budgeting begins a process of moving to a more financial sustainable position through a 12% rate increase. So I know tonight that we're going to hear from other councillors in regards to who would like to support a lower rate than what we have before us tonight. And there was also 65 people who put in a submission to council regarding the consultation for the budget. However, restated in my comments from the report and our experienced staff who have combined knowledge of probably about 50 years of local government experience. Two more minutes. One more? No. Oh, sorry. Okay.
Apologies, you're only allowed...
Sorry, I should have timed myself.
One extension. Sorry. Further contributions? Councillor Bain.
Thank you, Mayor. So firstly, just on our current financial situation. I think the author of the report has done a fantastic job outlining in quite some detail all the current financial challenges the council faces. I agree, we clearly do have to start bridging the deficit gap and return to surplus. Costs have increased dramatically and if we continue to keep operating with this deficit, we clearly won't have sufficient funds to replace or renew our existing assets down the track when it's required. And if we don't renew, maintain and replace our assets when required, the risk is eventually we'll reach a breaking point where we simply don't have enough funds to carry out essential works and then decisions start being made that parts of community halls, playgrounds, Kingborough Sports Centre, et cetera, are no longer safe if we don't have the money to replace or renew them. So I certainly agree with that part of the report in that we do have several budget issues that we need to address. It's more so the rate increase itself that I'd like to focus on. So just to run through some of what's happened between now and when the draft budget went out for consultation with the 12% rate increase. So following the draft budget with a 12% increase going out for consultation, we received feedback of which 90% of the respondents told us the 12% rate increase is just too high and encouraged us to look for avenues to reduce it. So from there, we've looked for savings and additional revenue was identified that the copping dividend could be increased from $600,000 per annum to $1 million. So that's a $400,000 recurring improvement to our underlying deficit. We also identified approximately $400,000 employee savings for 2425 by pushing back the start date of any new employee six months. So given a 1% rate increase generates around $360,000. Between the additional copping dividend and employee savings, we have $800,000, which is the equivalent of 2.2% of a rate increase. So we've identified $800,000 in revenue and savings. We've had the rate payers urging us to reduce the 12% rate increase. And then if we go ahead and accept this budget that ignores the request and instead we point to the underlying deficit paying $800,000 better off, not the rate payers. So this is the part that I don't agree with. So I believe the message that went out with the draft budget for consultation was that we have a big deficit issue and as a first step, that original draft budget had us on track to return to surplus, address our issues over the next couple of years. But now we've identified $800,000 that could reduce the rate increase by 2.2% and still landed pretty much exactly the same 2425 draft budget closing balance. But if we agree to this recommendation, we're saying that original budget wasn't good enough. We need to improve on it. And just on top of that, we know that since the draft budget was released for consultation, the federal government has increased council's road to recovery grant by approximately $450,000 per annum, which is going to improve our bottom line even further. Plus, if we look to the indicative capital works budget programmes for 2526 on page 54 of the agenda, we have it sitting around $14 million on average per year. So providing council stick within this budget, it will allow us to pay down our debt quicker and build up cash reserves. So all these positives will be incorporated into the long-term financial plan when it's finalised in the new financial year and place us in an improved financial position. So based on all the above, Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment if I can, please.
Yeah, if you could outline the amendment and then I will call for a seconder to the amendment. You can't give your argument about the amendment just yet. We just need to get a mover and a seconder.
So my amendment is to adjust the 2425 rate increase to 9.8%.
Does that have a seconder? We've got a seconder in councillor Antoli, so now you can speak. So now we're on the amendment, so anybody who has already spoken can speak on the amendment. And I'd ask you to speak to it first.
Well, I've essentially outlined in my original submission that the information we have here is that we can reduce the rate increase to 9.8%. Still be in pretty much the same position as we had in the original draft budget that went out. But because we've found these savings, we can pass these back on to the rate payers who, in their feedback, are clearly in need of this rate decrease. And also recognise that the mortgage repayments they're paying are probably the highest they're ever going to be this financial year and then improving years to come. So this is a win for the rate payers and it still holds council in good stead and addresses the underlying issue. Thanks.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Fox.
I appreciate the comments made by councillor Bain, but there's no way I could support the recommended amendment. But the main concern I have is that the community consultation came to us from a position of relative ignorance, that there was no comprehensive report before the community like we have now, that was only published a few days ago last week. The community would be much more informed if they read this report and realised that the position that we're in, the history of how we got here and what the future would look like if we went down any other path but the 12%. So any debate or discussion on 9.8 and to call on the responses from the community, I think it was a very small response compared to other years. It was an ill-informed response, unfortunately, and also without the vision of the long-term plan that we've discussed in our workshops but not in a public forum. So I do not support this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fox. Councillor Midgley on the amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. I'm wondering if we can hear from our staff in regards to why we need to be a financially resilient council and why it is important that we look to a 12% rate increase.
Mr Stewart.
Through you, Mayor. Council is the stewards of many, many millions of rate payer assets. And whilst we have a high degree of service and a great service level that we provide the community at the moment, those assets do age over time and we have a responsibility to appropriately prepare the organisation financially to be able to meet the needs of renewal. And also, as we have with many policies coming through and positions, to try and fund some of the future assets that our community look for from this organisation to set them up for the lifestyles that people in this community look for and why they want to live here. So there's a significant drive that we have to prepare ourselves as an organisation to be ready for those future demands. Alongside that, we have numerous operational requirements and levels of service that we need to meet in terms of the operational levels of service that we deliver across the many services that this organisation provides. And finally, I would say that, as has been touched on... And finally, I would say that, as, as has been touched on by, by councillors in this discussion so far and as is mentioned within the paper, the future is unknown at any particular moment in time and we have a responsibility as an organisation to prepare for the unknown, whether that be a natural disaster, whether that be financial events that happen across the broader globe, whether, you know, COVID as an example. So staff prepared the advice on the basis of trying to build the resilience of the organisation and sustainability to, to ready it to operate into the future.
Further speakers on the amendment. Councillor Court over.
Thank you, ma'am. Two questions first of all. The first question, if I may, through you, ma'am, is if we were to reduce the proposed rate increase from twelve percent, as the original motion suggests, down to nine point eight percent, as is suggested by councillor Bain's amendment, to reach the council's stated goals, how many more years of rate increases above five percent would we have to have?
Mr Stewart.
I can't give you a, an answer directly in the number of years that would take because it, it depends on a number of factors, including what those rate levels that are set in future financial years look like. What I can say is that the, the deficit for this financial year may increase if we don't cut levels of service alongside a decrease in the, the rate level requirement. So it will slow the organisation in, in its journey in terms of reaching surpluses and improving its cash position by slowing down the, the level of rate increase.
Thank you. Through you, ma'am. My second question is, I'm trying to get a sense of what the difference is to the average property owner if we go with nine point eight percent as opposed to if we go with twelve percent. Is it true that to an average property in Kingborough worth six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the difference between these two proposals is about forty dollars per year or about eighty cents per week?
Mr Spinks, do you have those figures, please?
Thank you.
Through you, ma'am. So with the current proposal of twelve percent, the impact on the average rate payer is two hundred and thirty two, two hundred and thirty two dollars per annum. If we decrease to nine point eight percent, we're looking at about a hundred and ninety three dollars per annum increase.
So sorry, two thirty two divided by ninety three.
Correct.
Which is a difference of thirty nine dollars for the year, which divided by fifty two is seventy five cents per week. So we're talking here about the difference between, if we go with Plan A, which is the original motion, that will be seventy five cents per week more expensive to the average rate payer than if we go with councillor Bain's suggested amendment. So briefly, I just want to say that I'll be voting against councillor Bain's amendment because I don't want to condemn the rate payers of this municipality to more years of above average rate increases. I don't want to prolong this, the suffering and I don't think that it's in accordance with all of the information that we received during the workshops. There's a reason why the staff consistently provided that advice, that their suggestion, their recommendation was unequivocal about the twelve percent. So that's why I won't, firstly, I won't, I don't want to condemn rate payers to a longer period of rate rises year after year after year. And secondly, I want to ensure the financial sustainability of this council to make sure that the services and the infrastructure that we provide is fit for purpose and that we can continue to deliver the material standard of living to the people of this municipality in line with their expectations. So as a council, we, we've heard tonight and I'm sure we'll hear a lot more about the vast array of services that are provided and the quality of the infrastructure that we have. And there are expectations that, that go with that and I, I don't think that we should be undermining that. And right now, I just want to acknowledge the significant pain and hardship that rate rises cause for regular families and households. And that pain is felt whether the increase is two hundred and thirty two dollars per annum or whether the increase is a hundred and ninety three dollars per annum. This is causing significant pain and the decisions that are made around this table affect people's material standard of living, their day-to-day experience in a very real and tangible way and I acknowledge that. And I don't want that feeling, that anxiety, that concern, that worry about the cost of merely existing. I don't want to prolong that for year after year after year. I don't think it would be financially responsible to, to sit around this table trying to maintain the sustainability of this organisation. I don't think it would be financially responsible to bank on the future years, to hope that we can, to hope that we can maintain this kind of level of really, I think, a very painful rate increases year after year after year. I don't want to see that happen and that's why I don't think that this is a responsible amendment. I, I think that as difficult as it is, we really need to listen to the expert advice that's been provided and, and that's why I won't be voting for councillor Bain's amendment. Thank you.
Ma'am, could I just jump in with a technical suggestion that we need to be addressing all of the elements of the budget resolution? So Mrs Morton does have an amendment that is based on a nine point eight percent rate rise that covers off on all of that. And for, for accuracy, it would be better to debate that as the amendment, even though the, the intent is there.
Thank you for that clarification. Further speakers on the amendment. Councillor Antoli.
Thank you, ma'am. I support councillor Bain's amendment because I believe it reflects a shift in the majority of the discussions that have been happening behind closed doors over the past few months. The fact that we're even willing to contemplate nine point eight percent as an amendment is a shock to a fiscally conservative councillor such as myself. We have been spoilt with two point eights for years and I say spoilt because we are the second most, I believe is the word, I won't use the word cheap, but in the fiscal terms, with the second most affordable in terms of low rate rises in the, in the state, with, I believe, the most affluent electorate per capita in the, local government electorate in the state. We have definitely ignored council advice to our detriment in years past to push it higher than two point eight and it's caught up with us. And the cost of living crisis has affected council just as rabidly as it has affected my personal finances and that of the majority of my friends in the community, especially those who have a mortgage. Like anyone with a mortgage, I'm paying, my family's paying twice as much today than as, than we were in October of twenty two when the rates started to skyrocket. So for me to even go above nine point eight percent or consider it is a shock to me and goes against my values, but also I can't vote for anything that puts our council into bankruptcy and the low rates will. So we have to bite the bullet. And last year, we were very conservative in our rate increases compared to other councils when the rates were higher and inflation was at seven point four percent last year. So I believe that a rate increase that is dramatic is needed and nine point eight percent will get us into surplus in around three to four years from now. There is a J curve to this nine point eight percent. It is not a precipitous plummet forever. It is a rescue plan to get us into surplus. We have found over eight hundred thousand dollars worth of savings in the past few weeks, which equates to a two point two percent equivalent to the budget. So we can drop it to two point, down two point two percent and still meet our targets. We will have a slightly higher deficit in the first year with this plan, but we will have a stronger cash flow position than if we did anything less than nine point eight percent. To me, the nine point eight percent is fiscally a small jump into people's pockets. It's a symbolic recognition of the cry of the community and I do believe their cry was well informed and I do believe their responses to the draft budget consultation was well informed and there was nothing hidden from them. But what we've been able to do with a substantial budget that is in the fifties of millions, we have been able to find some savings and some improvements. And I would like us to support this for the sake of the community to show that we've listened. But at the same time, I remind you all that nine point eight percent is a massive budget increase than anything we've ever considered in the history of this council, as far as I am aware. So I, and it will get us out of the black and it will give us cash positive positions in a few years' time. And the J curve will see us get out of the, of the red that we are currently in and we will be able to pay off our debts sooner with this increase than if we did it for anything less. So I would like us to acknowledge that. I want to thank the officers for their hard work. For me, this has been the most gruelling budget experience I've had in my career as a, a professional or for any organisation I've been a part of and the most contentious by far. And I do appreciate the work that the officers and the CEO have put into this. Please don't think that if we do go at nine point eight percent, by any means, we reject anything you've done. The fact that we are even at this level just goes to show how convincing you were and that we've listened. But at the same time, we are elected representatives that have to reflect the values of the community while still being fiscally sound as directors of this organisation. So I will support nine point eight percent. I believe it gets us there. I thank the mover for his convincing work that he's done behind the scenes and I do believe it reflects the majority of councillors present.
Councillor Street.
Thank you, ma'am. And I thank councillor Bain for putting forward this amendment. Like I think all of my colleagues have stated this evening, I appreciate that this council is in a difficult financial position. There is simply no doubt about that. The reasons why we've ended up in this position and, and the decisions that have been taken to get here, I think we could fill up another week's worth of meetings with debate about how and why that has occurred. I've sat around this table for, for six years and I would agree that over that period, we have taken a very conservative approach to increasing rates. But I don't accept the proposition that those decisions were made against the advice that we received as, as councillors. I think they reflected the best advice that we had at the time and the best estimates of our budget position that we had at the time. And I'm prepared to accept that there are always professionals who might argue for more. There have always been councillors who might argue for more. There's always been a tension between councillors on the one hand, and I accept that I'm one of them, wanting to try and, and keep that rate increase as low as we can while remaining financially sustainable versus a position of perhaps more comfort. But I think that's a good tension. I don't think that that tension is a vice. I think that's exactly why our system of local government is set up the way that it is to, to create that tension. So that there is a tension between the voice of the community and, and as represented by us as councillors and the professional advice that we receive from staff. I think that that is a good thing. And I think that councillor Bain's amendment this evening is a great example of, of that tension. Like many of my colleagues, when presented with the, the financial circumstances that we have been and the estimates that we've been presented with, I was obviously extremely worried and I was prepared to accept a twelve percent rate increase. Now, that is against everything that I have sat around this table and argued for over the previous six years. Philosophically, I have an issue with an imposition of a rate increase of that size, but we simply didn't have any other options when we started this process. As councillor Bain has, I think eloquently port, since we started this process, there have been savings identified that enable us to go to the community and say, we are still going to have to have a rate increase over and above anything that I've considered in my time on council and my living memory is a bit shorter than councillor Antoli's, but anything that I remember in my memory of paying rates certainly. So I think it allows us to go to the community and say, we're not breaking faith with you. We must have an above average rate increase in this financial year and likely that is going to continue for a couple more years. But we are doing what we can to identify savings and to the extent that we possibly can. While you continue to demand the service levels that you demand, we are cutting the, our cloth appropriately. The question of average rate increases is one that continues to be brought up and when we first started this process, it was a fallacy that, that I fell into as well. The, the figure that has been bandied around is a thirty nine dollar average difference between the rate with an increase of twelve percent as opposed to nine point eight percent. And I originally thought, look, you know, that's a pretty compelling argument. What has been pointed out to me subsequently and I, and I accept this point is that it compounds over time. We're not just talking about thirty nine dollars in this financial year. We're talking about thirty nine dollars plus next year's increase in the next financial year. We're talking about thirty nine dollars plus the next increase, plus the next increase in the following financial year. We're not just talking about thirty nine dollars this year. We're talking about every year hence when we go ahead and increase again. I think I can probably wrap up in a minute, ma'am.
So moved.
The motion is that councillor Street be given an extra minute. We've got a mover in councillor Antoli, a second in councillor Court over. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against, motion is carried.
So as I was saying, ma'am, I simply don't accept that as a, as a definitive argument anymore and accept that I was wrong to use it myself during the budget process as well. I think councillor Bain's amendment, like I've said, gives us an opportunity to go to the community without breaking faith with our community and saying we need what is frankly a massive rate increase, but we are doing our best to limit the impact on you as rate payers. The final thing that I will say is that while I believe that over the last six years, I've been making decisions in the best interests of council and rate payers. For my part, in whatever we've got to, however we've got to this point, I do apologise to rate payers and assure them that my commitment to a financially sustainable council and limiting the impact on them going forward has never been stronger.
Thank you, councillor Street. Councillor Dean.
Thank you, ma'am. Look, just start by wholeheartedly backing in councillor Street's comments around this fallacy around, we're just adding, talking about thirty nine dollars tonight. It's just completely untrue and, and misrepresents what is actually happening and what the discussion revolves around. Just to talk specifically to the amendment, I guess where I differ on councillor Street is that I don't necessarily believe that we have cut our cloth as much as we could have. And yes, that is against the advice, but that is my, my position. I think that the amendment before us doesn't go far enough, but I recognise the, the pragmatic intent from councillor Bain in trying to find a, a solution that's going to get majority support. So in respect to that pragmatism and reading the room, it's fairly split. So I will be supporting this amendment because I would rather see a nine point eight percent rate increase than a twelve, although I don't want either. Thank you.
Councillor Midgley.
Thank you. Just a question in regards to comments regarding the, the J curve and getting us back into surplus and the time that that will take, I guess. I'd like to hear from staff regarding that nine point eight percent and twelve percent in regards to the J curve comments.
The CEO or the director of people in finance, I don't mind.
Through you, ma'am. A, a nine point eight percent rates increase is a lower level of income into this organisation than a twelve percent increase.
A, a nine point eight percent rates increase is a lower level of income into this organisation than a 12% increase. The, the time it takes for the organisation to move through years of, of deficit and into surplus is dependent on a number of factors. One of which is where rates increases in future financial years land. And, and that we will, we will do modelling around scenarios for the long-term financial management plan. And that will be informed by the strategic asset management plan as well. So there's a lot of information still to come that will help us model what is, what, what different modes are into the future for this organisation to set its, its long-term financial management, management platform. However, under, under a number of different scenarios, we can reach surplus within varying levels of, of time, whether that be two, three years or beyond. Depends on where this council sees fit to set, to set this year's rates increase and subsequent years' rates increase. If we set higher levels and we maintain vigilance around our cost control and the way we manage council finances, we will achieve surplus faster and a positive and, and be accumulating cash position, which will support the organisation into the long term and prepare for our future asset demands. If we set lower rates levels, then it will slow us down. I can't provide, I guess, the, the particular lengths of time because there's too many unknowns in that equation. But what I can say is that the, the higher the, the rate increase that we set for this year will shorten that period of time with all other things be, being even between the different models.
councillor Bain.
Just a question, Mayor. Can I ask, is our current capital works plan telling us that we're going through a period of low requirements for replacement and renewal?
CEO.
Through you, Mayor. Yes. So that, that is the, the position we're in at the moment, that we have a portfolio of new assets and therefore we have lesser requirements in terms of, you know, renewal than we will in future financial years.
Further contributions on the amendment? I'll just speak briefly on it. Look, I think that we have been through a very rigorous budget process over the last six months or so. The staff have presented us with a range of scenarios and we did go out with a 12% increase based on that advice. But I think that we do need to consider some of the comments that we've received during the community engagement process. And I know that nine point eight percent is still exceptionally high. And I don't think that's lost on any of us here. And we know people are being impacted by the cost of living pressures and I certainly have a lot of empathy for them. I think hindsight, as councillor Courtover mentioned hindsight earlier, I think hindsight can be very valuable because it means you've considered what happened previously and perhaps learnt from it and we did, I think with hindsight, make an error last year in going so low when inflation was so high. We lost an opportunity then to, to go in accordance with other councils' rates increases last year. Because they recognised in a high, high time of inflation that, that they needed to do that in order to keep up with their costs. But we can't, we can't undo that now unfortunately. And what we do need to do is to set us on a path that is one of getting the balance right between providing the resources that our staff need to continue to operate at the expected level of service that people in the community have versus not putting too much of a, a burden on our rate payers, even though I know nine point eight percent is still exceptionally high. So I, excuse me, it's a struggle tonight. So I will be supporting the amendment put forward by councillor Bain. I think that we've been able to, through the, the budget process and particularly the last few weeks of the budget workshops, I did say very early on that we would leave no stone unturned in terms of trying to work out how we could reduce that. And some of those levers, I guess, as we like to call them, we're able to, to pull those and, and it, it does mean that we will not return to surplus in the, in the, it'll be another year. And I understand that, but I think that in order to, to get that rate rise down from 12% to 9.8%, that's just something that we need to, need to accept. So thank you to councillor Bain for putting this forward. Councillor Dean, do you have a question? Yes, you can.
Oh, I can ask a question. Just to clarify on the point you just made, Mayor. With the nine point eight percent, could staff tell us, are we pushing back our return to surplus by a year or are we able to keep it in the same predicted year as per the report?
CEO.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. The, the answer to that is again really difficult. If we set higher rates increases in subsequent years and we control other cost levers, then absolutely we could bring it into the same financial year. I, however, with, with all the other levers being unchanged, the, the return to surplus would be a year later. So absolutely anything is possible in terms of changing modelling that sits behind it to, to change the year of return to surplus. But if we leave all the parameters set, otherwise it would take a year longer.
Further questions or contributions? Councillor Bain, did you want to sum up?
If I may sum up, I believe that modelling we've seen shows us returning to surplus in the same financial year under both scenarios. I appreciate the support from the councils and the discussion. And yes, I think if this does go ahead, it's going to be much, a slightly better result for the public. Noting whatever else is saying, nine point eight is still a big, big impost to people's budgets. But as we see from the evidence in the report, it's, we need this extra money to keep Kingborough moving to what it is and ensuring that our assets are kept up to scratch for the rate payers.
Thank you councillor Bain. I'm going to put the motion now, if we could have that original motion back on, or the amendment, sorry, on the screen. So that is the, that is the amended motion. It's moved by councillor Bain and seconded by, sorry, I didn't write down who seconded it. Seconded by councillor Antoli. All those in favour of the amendment? Against? A show of hands is required. All those in favour of the amendment? It's councillors Antoli, Dean, Bain, Richardson, Street and Reet. And those against? It's councillors Fox, Courtover, Midgley and Gladewright. The amendment is carried. So the amendment now becomes the substantive motion. We've only had two speakers on the substant, no, sorry, three speakers on the substantive motion. That's councillor Gladewright, councillor Fox and councillor Bain. So if anybody else would like to make a contribution on the substantive motion, now is your time. Councillor Courtover.
Thank you, Mayor. Rising rates are terrible for families who are already struggling. Our community deserves high-quality infrastructure and services. And in a time of high inflation, we know that cost increases for households and for councils are going to be high. I've heard firsthand from residents who are extremely anxious because of the decisions that we make around this table. And our choices do matter. And if council, if councilors continually decide to keep rates too low, then they are condemning rate payers in future years to pay more or to have their services cut. The other levels of government, state and federal, particularly federal, should stop the cost shifting and should support councils far more than they do. Just compare the financial assistance grants over the decades to see the impact that cost shifting and the reduction in support from other levels of government has had on local councils around the country. Now, in supporting the, the budget motion as amended, I'll be voting tonight to try and get council's finances back on track, albeit potentially more slowly and with probable rate increases above CPI in subsequent years now that the motion is amended. But this is, to get council's finances back on track is in accordance with our strategic plan and it is in line with the advice that we've had over a series of workshops. And I, I do take the opportunity to thank the staff for their work. They do hard work under difficult circumstances. And I take the opportunity to thank every member of the community who participated in the consultation, who shared their perspectives and their ideas with me. It, it is an incredibly difficult decision and one not to be taken lightly. And we do this rate rise amidst the backdrop of a cost of living crisis that is hurting Kingborough's residents. The cost of existing is becoming unbearable for many people, which is why hardship measures are so crucial. They're essential to give people who are struggling a fair go. And I'm pleased that we'll have some hardship, discussion of our hardship policy later in this evening's session. The rising costs that residents are feeling has been driven by a number of factors, some local, some national and some international. And some of these cost rise factors were predictable or should have been predicted and others were out of council's control. And you can read about those factors in the reports, stormwater revaluations, depreciation, Kingston Park delays, rising interest rates, costs and delays associated with construction and so on. With respect to the capital budget, as we can see at clause 5.3 on page eight, part, this is a quote, "Part of the considerations of the Capital Works Programme have been to delineate between those works which are renewal in nature and those which are new assets or for upgraded assets", end quote. Sometimes, as, as the report says, in practice, of course, this separation is not always as clear-cut as sometimes separate works can involve, sometimes works can involve a combination, end quote. So to unpack that a little bit, it makes sense to upgrade some assets sometimes. So if you've got play equipment that's due for repair or renewal, if there are new safety standards, you actually have to upgrade that equipment. If there are public toilets that need repair and renewal, you've got to do your maintenance on the public toilets anyway. Will you take that opportunity to make them DDA compliant, make them, make them accessible? The stormwater management plan for council says that 53% of our stormwater pipes were built at without the capability of withstanding a once-in-20-year flood event. So it makes sense that as these assets come to the end of their natural lives after some 50 years, it makes sense to not just repair them to the same level that they were before. It makes sense to upgrade them so that they're fit for purpose for the next 50 years in line with what we know about contemporary standards and, and larger weather events. Now, in our council workshops, we discussed at length the idea of cutting council costs and this was raised in submissions. We, from the community, we explored what options existed and I read every single one of those submissions from the community about the budget. And, and we did discuss revenue raising ideas, including my suggestions for differential rates on short-stay accommodation and vacant residential and non-residential land, as Hobart City Council has done. The prediction is that those measures may have raised revenue by $30,000 per year and $1 million annually, respectively, for short-stay accommodation and vacant land rates. But it was, yeah, so I'm just putting that out there. Commercial ventures are also worth considering to raise revenue. It is totally reasonable for people to be upset with council for raising their rates, for people whose mortgages are going up, the, the bills are going up, grocery prices are going up, everything's going up. And so for many people, they, they feel like they're getting kicked while they're down to have their, their rates go up as well. But those submissions that I read were not able to answer, if council were to cut costs, which roads wouldn't we repair? Which public toilets should remain closed? Which stormwater pipes shouldn't be upgraded? There were a few suggestions about individual capital projects which some individuals felt shouldn't go ahead. But I have to emphasise that simply cancelling one project will not alter the structural issue with the underlying operational result. I've heard from many residents about their needs and expectations for service delivery. After the rain today, there will be roads that need repair. There will be potholes forming tonight that will need filling and culverts that need clearing. This work must be done by council. And when someone contacts the council and says, we need to make pedestrian access safer at Kingston Beach. May I please have two more minutes?
I've got a mover in councillor Midgley and a second in councillor Gladewright. That councillor Courtover be granted an extra two minutes. All those in favour? Against, motion is carried.
Thank you, Mayor. When someone says, we need to fix traffic management in Kingston Beach or schoolchildren are struggling to get to school, we need a footpath, it's a safety issue. Or, or when people say, there's graffiti here that urgently needs removal or a public toilet that urgently needs to be fixed. These are real services. The community deserves that service delivery and I can't support a cut to those services. Which is why I'm voting in line with the, the motion as amended tonight. Because we're here for the long term. This council's here for the long term and we can't abrogate our responsibility for the sake of some short-term political expediency. We can't abrogate our responsibility to the community, not just the rate payers of today, but also the rate payers of tomorrow, who will be stuck with the cost or the diminished services if we don't urgently rectify this council's financial position. Thank you, Mayor.
councillor Midgley and then councillor Antoli.
Can I ask a question? Can I, can I raise some of the positive things that have been, that are part of this budget?
Yes.
That's my question. So some of the positive outcomes.
Point of, point of order, Mayor. I think if.
Well, she hasn't made her sub.
Yes, I have.
Yeah, you've, I think you might have just been hoodwinked into allowing councillor Midgley a second opportunity to speak. She, she asked you, can she, can she restate?
Yeah, she made a substantive.
Sorry, I didn't have councillor Midgley on my list as having substantive, but the CEO assures me. So no, you may not. But you can ask a question if you're clever about it.
Thank you.
The question is, the question is not, can you ask a question?
Can, can I please, can I, can staff please highlight some of the fantastic capital works projects that are included in this budget, please?
I reckon our director of engineering services would love to do that.
Yes, through you, Mayor. Yes, thanks for all the discussions. It's been really interesting tonight. So yes, we still have a, a comprehensive capital works programme and, and we'll be doing a number of different things next year for the community. So I'll just talk about a couple of those ones that are sitting on the list in front of me here. So we have a couple of toilet replacements, which is in line with our toilet strategy in terms of Stillwater Park and Trail Bay. Stillwater Park is good because it actually will be part of the, or it'll add to the, the other works we're doing down there in terms of the whole playground as well at the same time. So that'll complete that area. We have a project for Channel Highway's snug footpath. So that'll be going through the middle of snug, which will be good in terms of actually allowing that pedestrian access for particularly school kids getting to and from school. And I guess that forms part of a, a larger type network that we'll be looking to actually put in place in the future as well at the same time. We have a major revamp of the Sherbet Oval change rooms. So that's a, a replacement renewal project, obviously a very dated and age building with lots of safety issues. So that'll be an important one to actually get on to. We have some major work to do in Pelveda Road. So councillors may be aware that over the last few years there, we've been upgrading sections of Pelveda Road, generally one section at a time. We're coming to the last part of it. So we're actually funding that last part of Pelveda Road, which will complete that road. So thanks to all the hard work for staff on that one. We will also be doing some work on our playground renewals. So there's some work at Drew Point and there's also some work at Alona Playground, which will help actually in terms of renewing some of the playground equipment that's actually been in place for a number of years. We are doing some work on a number of different resales and re-sheets across municipalities. So the allocations we have for those areas there are unchanged from previous years. So we're still putting a lot of money into those particular areas. We'll be doing some work on some major stormwater upgrades. We'll be doing some work on some major stormwater upgrades in Toruna in particular. We've got Beringa and Wandella, which are one of the more major projects for next year. We've got some work happening down at Middleton in terms of some culvert upgrades as well. And down at Gordon, we're doing some work on the Three Hut Point Recreation Car Park. So this is just a bit of a taster of a number of different projects we're actually doing. So it's quite extensive, it's across the whole municipality. It's in line with what we've identified as particularly replacement renewal projects, but also some, you know, needed upgrades from a safety perspective or ones that have actually been supported through our strategies as well at the same time. Thank you for the question.
Further contributions on the substantive, councillor Antoli?
Thank you, mayor. I don't have a prepared speech. I would like to talk briefly from the heart to my peers, to my colleagues on council and to the community if they're listening. For me, 9.8% is something I need to vote for and I will do so holding my nose, not because it is a wrong decision, but it's a difficult decision. And it's odious to me, but it has to be done. And I have to vote like an adult and not like a child. So a child, the average child will do things in their own self-interest and an average adult will do things for the greater good and for the good that they need to make decisions for their family. The rate increase will hurt me percentage wise just as much as it hurts everyone else. For my family, the past 12 months have been the most difficult for us financially in 20 years of marriage and we are a relatively affluent family. And so I can only imagine what 9.8% may do for some families. For those that are burdened by this, all I can say to you is I offer you my sincere apology. But the council has, I believe, an enlarged heart for those who are in hardship, which we'll be discussing later on tonight. And I ask you to take advantage of the renewed and beefed up hardship policy if you truly are in hardship, because you will definitely be getting my support if it comes to any form of a council vote. But we have to do the right thing by the community because this council is the only thing between a collapse of the local community and prosperity for the local community because of the services that we offer that no one is able to afford to do on their own and wouldn't do privately. And that's why we need local government. And there are some out there that believe we don't and shouldn't have local government. Well, I'm sorry, that's not the sandwich you've been handed. You've got to eat the one that you've been given, as we have here, to paraphrase Malcolm Fraser, when he came into government straight after the disastrous Whitlam budgets. So sometimes we have to eat the sandwich we're given. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be crude, but that's just the reality of the situation. I would like to thank Mr Spinks. I'd like to thank the officers who helped us through the budget process. It was a bruising budget process for me, but it was a necessary and it was forensic. And I want to salute those staff and our new CEO for guiding us through the process. For me to vote 9.8%, it just goes to show how convincing you were, because I would self identify as the person here who would scream the loudest for anything above 0% increase per annum. So I hope that those out there listening would accept my sincere perspective and support the mayor when she goes out there to sell this. It will set us up for success. I agree with councillor Dean, I wish it was less, but that's not the meal we've been served tonight and that's the decision that we have to make as adults and as respected members of the community. So thank you for the many conversations we've had behind closed doors. More has been said and done behind closed doors than has been done in public. And I think the community understands when you are talking about this sort of stuff, that's the way these things work. And I appreciate the mayor has a big job ahead of her, but she has my full support.
Thank you councillor Antoli. Councillor Fox, you've spoken on the substantive, so do you have a question?
I do have a question, thank you, mayor. I'm just wondering how the 9.8% is going to affect the recruitment of staff process and programme that we've committed to?
So as we had discussed during the budget process, that would just mean that the additional staff that we're going to be, that were included in this budget would only begin at a half year rather than the full financial year, which is not dissimilar to what occurs now anyway because the budget is being passed and then there's time to recruit, et cetera. And so it'd just mean delaying the start of those positions.
Unfortunately, I wasn't privy to the motion before it was on the screen and I haven't read it. But I guess my question was relating to 9.8% versus the 10% that was originally being proposed. So there's no change, that question, no change.
No, correct. Any further contributions on the substantive motion? Councillor Dean?
Sure, I thought everyone would speak. So look, to begin this discussion, the deputy mayor pointed out that there are a lot of projects which we'd like to see funded. Raising the rates by 12 or now 9.8% is obviously not going to deliver all of those projects. If we raised it by 20%, we still wouldn't be able to deliver all those projects. And that's just the reality of what we're here deciding. And councillor Midgley rightly pointed out that this is about balance. And we have differing views because we represent different parts of the electorate, sure, but it is my view that this balance goes too far and burdens our ratepayers unnecessarily. So I suppose, it's pointed out very clearly in the report, but why we're here is largely down to, I guess we didn't quite predict the level of depreciation that was going to come into our books, as is pointed out in the report. And I suppose that's the reality of where we're at right now. The standard, I suppose, response that I'm sure families are experiencing right now with a strained budget is to look at what they're spending, to limit that spending, potentially reduce that spending. This budget proposes spending more. And I suppose that's where I've pointed out previously, which I've, is the point which I've struggled with when we have discovered a gaping hole in our budget since the last, since 12 months ago, that we are not just proposing a significant rate rise to get us back in a sustainable position, but we are agreeing to, as we've just heard, spend more money. So for that reason, and a bunch of others, which I'll point to now, is one, apart from an additional impost in terms of operational costs, the second point I would talk about is that underpinning these decisions that we're making must be a very robust, long-term financial management plan and an asset management plan, both of which is pointed out in the report are under review. So we don't have the full set of information unfortunately before us. I understand, as I've said, that the depreciation has really taken hit to the budget. But without that full picture, I just take the view that we should be erring on the side of caution when we don't know the full figures before us. I would like to see a reviewed long-term financial management plan and an asset management plan before we ever entertain something close to double figures or 12 or 9.8%. So that's where I find it really challenging, I guess, that we are experiencing, as we've pointed out rightly so, everyone is experiencing very, very challenging times. And yes, we may be one of the wealthier, on average municipalities in Tasmania, but there are so many people doing it tough on fixed incomes that don't have the option to get an extra 10% of income this year. There are renters who often get forgotten in these debates because they don't directly pay their rates, but their landlords pay them on behalf. But I know for a fact there will be landlords out there using this as an excuse for a further rent increase on top of the rent increases they have experienced. And as councillor Antoli has pointed out rightly, interest rates have meant people's mortgages have doubled. So we cannot ignore those facts. And without the fact that we haven't got the long-term financial management plans and the data set behind us to give us a full, clear picture of where we're going over the next five to 10 years, I think we do need to err on the side of caution, have a look in 12 months, do that work and see where we're at before making any drastic change. So 9.8% and 12% are just figures that are too high right now in this economic climate. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you councillor Dean. Any further contributions on the substantive motion? I just wanted to, just before I hand over to whoever moved the original motion, it seems like a lifetime ago. I think my cold and flu tablets are wearing off. Councillor Gladright and councillor Fox, before I hand over to councillor Gladright to sum up, I just wanted to echo some of the comments that councillor Antoli did in relation to the work that we've gone through with this. And ironically enough, I also quoted Malcolm Fraser a few years ago in, when we had this similar discussion about a difficult issue. And that is because we have got a, yeah, I know, I never thought I would quote Malcolm Fraser. It's very strange. And, you know, we are in a predicament that nobody sitting around this table likes, that we have got to do what is the right thing here to ensure that we have a financially sustainable council. And I think I made, I think I made the point when I was asked a question about six weeks ago or so now. It's almost like we've had the imperfect storm that has led us to be in the situation that we're in now. And I don't think three years ago we could have predicted that. But the issue with the revaluation of our assets, it's great that our assets are worth so much more now, but of course the depreciation is impacting us. Things like the building index rising 35% over three years, when at the same time that that was happening and the roads index went up 18%, we only put rates up 10% over those three years. So essentially what we've been doing is not being a, is not keeping up with the costs that are the burden for council. And unfortunately now, we have to take some significant corrective action because otherwise we are going to be in a negative cash situation in a few years. So I think I do speak on behalf of everyone here when I say this is not something that we have considered lightly. And as councillor Antoli said, I think the first time we heard the 12%, we were shocked and then we started to understand it. But now we've tried to unpack that a little bit and pull a few levers that are available to us to minimise that at the same time as taking the corrective action that we know is necessary. So thank you very much to all councillors for the work that has gone into these discussions over many, many months. Thank you to the staff who have worked very hard on this and who have entertained a range of scenarios for us and produced a lot of, I know we requested a lot in terms of additional paperwork and a lot of extra time spent. It was important to all of us here that we were thorough in considering this and helping us to make a decision. So I appreciate that work a great deal. So I will now hand back to councillor Gladright to sum up before we put the motion.
Thank you, I didn't have too much more to say. Just I wanted to thank everybody's kind and considered contributions. I'm really impressed with how we've all worked so well together. I haven't been convinced on the amendment, so I won't be supporting it, but I really appreciate the reasons behind why the amendment has come forward. So thanks, everyone.
So I'm going to put the motion now. It's as moved by councillor Gladright and seconded by councillor Fox. So it is the amended, it was the substantive motion that was amended. So it has reduced the proposed increase from 12% that was printed in the agenda to 9.8% in the amendment, just so everybody's clear what we're voting on. All those in favour? Against? Show of hands is required, all those in favour? It's councillors Antoli, Cordova, Bain, Richardson, Street and Reet. And those against is councillors Fox, Dean, Midgley and Gladright. The motion is carried. That now takes us to page 74, financial hardship policy with a recommendation on page 78. Do I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved councillor Cordova, seconded councillor Midgley. Councillor Cordova?
Thank you, mayor. Concomitant with the decision that's just been made regarding the budget, it's absolutely essential that council strengthens its hardship policy, makes it more robust, makes it more fit for purpose. The original hardship policy was concocted specific to the COVID pandemic and so the updates and the changes that lie within this policy, I think, reflect, certainly reflects the view that when people are faced with increasing costs of living, increasing costs of existence and increasing council rates, it's really important that when people are facing financial hardship, that there are means to ameliorate some of the harm and to make sure that people who are doing it tough have access to support. So I think that this not only should hopefully go some way to helping people who are in financial hardship, but it also sends a clear signal that council needs to be responsive to people who are suffering. This is not an isolated situation where people in this municipality are in pain. This is happening all across, really it's happening all across capitalist democracies, you know, around the world. The cost of living is just ridiculous. The increases in grocery bills, in energy prices, in housing, you know, these costs are just adding and adding. And we as a council need to always be looking to care for the most vulnerable and make sure that nobody is left behind. So when we do have to raise rates in order to make this organisation more financially sustainable, we need to do that on the one hand, at the same time as caring for those who are struggling. And so that's why I think this hardship policy is necessary. And I certainly welcome more discussion about how we can continue to improve this policy and others to make sure that people who are experiencing vulnerability throughout our municipality are cared for. This council needs to be agile and responsive to those needs and we need to do whatever we can to make sure that no one's left behind. Thanks.
Councillor Midgley?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, also support the update of this policy and that also came through discussions in our budget workshops and the impact of financial hardship on our ratepayers. And as councillor Cordova, I think he said that it's in line with our, the LGAT Local Government Association Tasmania policy, which I guess will be moving across all other councils in Tasmania. One of my sort of thoughts around this is, you know, as council, we can become, I guess, very, you know, a bit bureaucratic around these sort of things. And when somebody does contact us in regards to the financial hardship policy, in our response to that, I guess I'm just hoping as well alongside that we might be able to provide some information regarding some sort of social services support as well. I think it's Minister Street's office that sends out a list of the different social services that are about, to note that, yes, this is kind of one area in regards to how council can support financial hardship, but also in the community there are a number of social services that we're also aware of, like the Kingston Nabourd House, Blue Sky Laundry, Orange Sky Laundry, sorry, and the Helping Hands that comes out the council in the evening. So I just thought, you know, rather than that ticker box going through that thing, that we have that kind of kindness and compassion around, there are a few other things in the community that are available as well. And I guess just in regards to, I don't know, mayor, if staff just want to sort of step us through, because I guess there's a kind of, you know, that, the deferring payment arrangements. And then I guess if a ratepayer, just for whatever reason could be they experiencing, that they just cannot pay their rates for the, say, next six months or something like that. I know it's outlined in the policy as well, but just that step around, that, you know, remission or waiver or all or part of the rates and things like that. If I can just have a bit of an understanding about that, please.
Mr Jones, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, I can through you, mayor. Yes, the initial process and something that we do regularly is look at payment plans for people. Clearly, to just cease paying for a period of time means you just end up with a bigger debt at some stage in the future. So we would endeavour to at least get some money for a period of time and then look at recovering the rest in the future, you know, with the intention of trying at recovering the rest in the future, you know, with the intention of trying to make sure that the rates are fully paid by the end of the current financial year or the following financial year. The evidence of financial hardship does, one of the criteria there is to have spoken with financial councillors. And at that stage, you would expect they would get introduction to other services that are available to them, as you, you just alluded to. It's something that's an ever-changing area and it would be very hard for us to keep up to date with that, but the financial councillors would be the experts in that area.
Thank you. Further discussions? I'll just make a contribution. We, we did already have, as the paper outlines, a financial hardship policy that we brought in over, following COVID. And I think we were one of the first councils, if I'm not mistaken, to do that. And then, which is why then, as others wanted to follow suit, LGAT developed a model template policy for hardship as to how councils should approach that. And there were a few items in that that we're now just updating to be in line with that template. So, you know, it is unfortunate that we do have people who may need to use this in, in the future. And, but we've now got another option available to council under this new policy that we didn't have before, and that is complete remittal of rates if they are in extreme financial distress. So as much as we don't want to see that happen, it is important that we have that as an option for, for rate payers as a last resort. Councillor Dean.
Sorry, I just had a question, I didn't trust my light fast enough. We heard when we were discussing this at a workshop about how a financial hardship policy that'd be expanded and other kind of urban council actually had no kind of applicants in the last year. So as much as I absolutely support us doing what we can to make sure that those, if they need it, can seek some assistance, I've just got the question around what, I suppose, review mechanism will be put into this policy or how will it be reported, just to make sure that it's actually, we aren't just wasting time and creating policy for policy's sake and that we've got some kind of gauge as to whether people are applying for it and whether it's working and those people, I guess, going through that process, providing some feedback. So just that question around.
Mr Jones.
In the policy we brought in that will report back quarterly on any remissions that we, we're given, it would be difficult to measure any adjustments to payment plans because they're happening every day and they've, they've been happening in the years past. That's really only on remissions that are new and that will be reported to council quarterly. So you can verify from those numbers how things are going.
Councillor Bain.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to point out, 4.14 talks about that we currently have 3,400 rate payers on direct debit arrangements. Just to clarify, that option is available to anyone, not just people who are experiencing financial hardship. If they, if someone doesn't like the bill shock of receiving a rate invoice once a quarter, they can contact council and organise a 12 monthly instalment.
That's correct. Any further contributions? Otherwise, I will ask Councillor Cordova, did you want to sum up? No, I'm going to put the recommendation as printed on page 78, moved by Councillor Cordova and seconded by Councillor Midgley. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. Turn now to page 99, appendices with a recommendation on page 99. There's actually only a calendar, a forward calendar in there, so I'm looking for a mover and a second please. Moved, Councillor Cordova, seconded, Councillor Bain. Any questions? No. I'll put the recommendation. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Takes us to page 99, notices of motion, there were no notices of motion. And then also now confirmation of items to be dealt with in closed session. We'll be looking at confirmation of minutes, applications for leave of absence, tender assessment, Kingston Beach Oval changing rooms and car park construction and current court matters, looking for a mover and a second.
I also moved, but I think a councillor wanted to ask a question.
Yes, but we're not in there yet. Thank you. Yep. So we've got a mover in Councillor Fox and a second there in Councillor Midgley. All those in favour? Against? In accordance with the Kingborough Council meeting audio recordings, guidelines, policy recording in the open session, the meeting will now cease. Thank you very much to, we've lost our public gallery, they were here, we appreciated them coming, but thank you to those who've been watching along at home. Good evening, the open session of council.